All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. If anyone wanna please stand for the pledge allegiance. We're gonna have Meadow Lane students that will be leading us. Let's give them a hand as they come. Come on, let's give them another hand. All right, I would like to take this time and thank all of our guests and those that are viewing online to be able to attend our board meeting. At this time, if I can have an adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes. Superintendent Subreport, Dr. Buck.
Welcome, everybody. I'm glad that we're gonna have some items here, recognizing some kids and seeing some kids. So that's what it's all about, so I'm glad everybody's here. Several things I wanna talk about today. I wanna make sure we congratulate the Lee Summit West High School FBLA. Ally and Gabby and Amelia, they planned and hosted a donation drive collecting toys and games for families with children staying at Children's Mercy. They raised over $700 at the event and donated more than 500 items. The team will now bring this fundraiser to the state FBLA conference and compete in the community service project event later this month. Thank you to everybody on the board and the community who helped us celebrate our 12 Excellence in Teacher Award winners, our three Teachers of Distinctional winners, and our six Support Professional of Excellence recipients this month, this past month. We'll celebrate all these folks at the Lee Summit High School on April 17th. So if you wanna learn more about that, please check out our Facebook page and we'll celebrate them again at Lee Summit High School on April 17th in the evening. Congratulations to Dr. Maide, she's out in the hallway, I think. Dr. Maide, if you haven't heard, yesterday was surprised as the exemplary new Principal of the Year for the entire Greater Kansas City Missouri Principals Association. Congratulations to Dr. Maide. To make it a surprise, by the way, we lied to her, she had to come over here so then the band and cheerleaders and everybody can set up and then she had to... Oh, the meeting's actually at the West High School. She drove back and came to that, so thank you for playing along, Dr. Maide. Our annual Legislative Breakfast brings together District Assistant Advisory Committee, Business Roundtable, PTA Presidents, and our staff to engage in meaningful dialogue with student leaders, we have students there as well, and state legislators about public education. So I wanna give a special thanks to the four legislators who came this year, and that was Senator Mike Serpoy, Representative Carrie Engle, Representative Chris Sander, and Representative Kemp Strickler for attending. They were fantastic with their time, so thank you to them. Our third graders had a blast, as the whole district did, when you were talking about careers and figuring out what you're gonna do, but third graders did it in a unique way this year. They got to go to Careers on Wheels at Legacy Park two weeks ago and see not only what jobs are out there, but also what vehicles come with those jobs. So they had a lot of fun out there. And we also had the eclipse earlier this week on Monday and Summit Lakes Middle School students and staff. They were actually on Fox 4 broadcast highlighting how they incorporated the event into their science classes, so kudos to them and kudos to everybody who did so throughout the district. Three announcements I wanna make. LSR 7 Pre-K is expanding, the board approved that a couple months ago. Applications are set to close tomorrow for the new Pre-K program. They'll serve over 204-year-olds the year before kindergarten that live within our boundaries. So our new program is separate from our other great beginning sites. It'll be hosted at Prairie View Elementary. You can learn more by going to lsr7.org backslash pre-k. 24-25 Student Rep Application Windows open and is set to be closed until about an hour and a half ago. Set to be closed on Monday, April 15th. The board kinda gave permission to extend that to next week Friday, so April 19th. If you're a rising junior or senior and interested, or if you know the rising junior and senior who might be interested, please have them check out lsr7.org backslash student reps. And last, this is hot off the press, I don't have anything to give to her yet, but we just got notified by MSBA that Vice President Jennifer Foley has achieved both Advanced and Master Boards member certification. So let's give her a round of applause for her great dedication to service. We'll get your certificates and pins as they come in. They hadn't notified her yet, so she was surprised to find that out tonight. All right, that concludes 2.01, brings us to 3.01, School Spotlight Meadow Lane Elementary.
Good evening. First, I'm gonna start with our Volunteer of the Year, Christine Johnson. I'm the principal of Meadow Lane and it's a huge humbling honor to serve our learning community. And we definitely could not do that without the adults that care for our kids, without incredible families supporting us. And some of those family members are parents of our teachers that are volunteers in the building. So our Volunteer of the Year is Celia McAfee. She is a mom of our ELD teacher Megan Juhan. She is in our building, reading with students, playing games, organizing supply closets, and always with a smile and saying, "What can I do? Where do you need me?" So this is for Celia. We really appreciate everything you've done. And now I'm gonna turn it over to the real stars, which would be our Bengal students.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Smitty, I'm in fifth grade and I'm in Mrs. Weber's class.
Hello, my name is Juliette Smitty, I'm in second grade and my teacher's Mrs. Miller.
Hello, my name is Tarot Rafina, I'm in second grade and I'm in Ms. Holly's class.
Hello, my name is Michael Egan and I'm in fourth grade in Ms. Rhodes' class.
Hello, my name is Coraia Brown and I'm in fourth grade in Ms. Rhodes' class.
We are from Meadow Lane and we are here to talk to you about Bengal Bunches. But first, we want to teach you our cheer. I say Meadow, you say Lane. Meadow?
Lane.
Meadow?
Lane.
I say Bengal, you say Proud. Bengal?
Proud.
One of our primary goals with Bengal Bunches is to foster a greater sense of community throughout the entire school through cross-grade buddies.
Bengal Bunches offer a valuable chance for students to build friendships across the school and for older students to serve as a mentor to their younger partners.
When students walk through the halls and know that they have friends in other classrooms throughout the school, they have a sense that Meadow Lane is a second home.
Some of our favorite lessons were centered on respect, positive self-talk, and filtering thoughts. My personal favorite was football brings us together because of the Chiefs and the Super Bowl.
Here are some example lessons we have done this year. Here are some example lessons we have done this year. We will leave you with this quote. "Family isn't always your relatives, it's the ones who accept you for who you are, the ones who would do anything to see you smile, and who love you no matter what." This book is called Our Class is a Family by Shannon Olson. Do you guys have any questions?
All right, and if our Volunteer of the Month can come back up front so that we can get a picture with the board, thank you so much.
All right, our next agenda item is 3.02, School Spotlight Summit Ridge Academy. And I believe Dr. Hertzog is a pinch hitting for the group.
Well, good evening. Mr. Campbell couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna have the honor of introducing Ms. Nicole Wood, and she has some students from SRA. And they're gonna speak tonight a little bit about the Learning Loft Program at Summit Ridge Academy. So Ms. Wood, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening. We have three of our students here, so if you guys wanna come over and say your name.
Good evening, my name is Lucas Taylor, I am with SRA and these are my fellow students.
My name is Blake Everett.
My name is Franklin Tossi.
All right, and we're here to share our Learning Loft Program with you. One of our goals was to create more cooperative learning opportunities for students and then also to create a greater sense of belonging. So Lucas and Franklin are gonna share some of the activities that we do in the Learning Loft.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. One of the activities that we have recently been doing is team building. We had a guest brought to us by Mr. Campbell, his name was Mr. Potter, correct? He was and probably still is active duty Army, so he helped us learn to communicate, understand, and work with our fellow classmates, and learn to problem solve. So that's one of the many things we've also been doing. We've also learned to work with our classmates with a balloon project and learn to stack the highest. And so I'll turn it over to Franklin.
Currently in the Learning Loft, we have multiple activities. We have client connect projects. Some of these projects include building a bench for the school, not, building a desk for the school for everybody to work at once they're done with their work, whether it be help other students with their work and when they need time outside of their classroom to focus more on the work, or other people who are done with their work that are in different classes to come together and work on projects that they need to work on. We also have multiple, we also have multiple trivias that have happened from the trivia group. We have a bulletin board that is going up soon and we have... We have the yearbook, which will be actually the first yearbook that our school will ever have, as well as we're working on a graduation video for those that are graduating this year.
We also have guests come in, speak to us, try to leave some different activities just to get some new faces in the building as well. And then Blake's gonna talk about our alternative space that we work in.
So we got a space called the Student Union that we work in. It's like a comfortable sit wherever you want with your friends if you want, and we got a like board, what is it called? Yeah, smart board, pretty good. And yeah.
We got some nice movable chairs in there, so when they're working in groups, they can get with their groups, but then separate when they need to be independent again. And along with all that other stuff, we also do weekly SEL lessons in that group. So we get a whole lot done in that time. And there's some pictures of some of the activities, like Lucas mentioned, the balloon stacking. They were trying to see if you could get the highest. When the guest from the Army was there, they had to, they were tied together and had to try to get untied. So we've done a lot of fun things. We won a grant, a student-led grant earlier in the year, so it's been very awesome. And this is the first time we've ever had students come and speak at a meeting, so it's a great thing.
Hey, can I make a comment before they leave? Before you guys leave, I apologize. For board members who haven't been here very long, I think this is really important to note that that used to be the gym, right? Where all of this is, and we used to do graduation even within that particular thing before moving it to MIC to be able to create the space, which hopefully has been incredibly beneficial, right? And so I just wanted to tell you guys kudos because that space has been transformed into something that's awesome. And so anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for coming, so.
Next agenda item is 3.03, I'll turn it over to you, President Sparks.
All right, so at this time, if, I'm gonna take point of privilege if Board Member Murdock and myself, if we can come down and if Vice President Foley will read the descriptions for the next three items and we'll just give them the plaques as they come down, will that work?
While they're doing that, just to let you know, there's five LSR 7 seniors who earned this recognition for excellence through the Missouri Scholars 100 Program. Missouri Scholars 100 is a statewide program that honors 100 of the state's top academic students in the graduating class of 2024. So we have 2% of all the students in the entire state go to Lee Summit, 5% of them in the Missouri Scholars 100 is from Lee Summit, so that's pretty awesome. How they're selected is a formula based on GPA, ACT, or SAT score and meeting the criteria of an academic decathlon. In addition, students must also have excellent attendance, be an exemplary school citizen, and be involved in an extracurricular activity.
All right, so first up, we have Kaylee Stahlwinch. Then we have... All right, then we have Thomas Burhe. Leila Patachnik. Ricky Lyon. And Jacob Clipfow. Jake, you can squat down. Oh, gosh, so sorry, guys.
Yep, perfect.
Congrats, guys.
Our next one is Missouri Scholars Academy, which I taught at for seven years, a wonderful place. Missouri Scholars Academy, several Lee Summit R7 sophomores, rising juniors, if you will, will attend MSA, a three-week summer academic program for approximately 330 Missouri's gifted students, so the brightest of the brightest from across the state. Acceptance is based on a student essay, teacher recommendation, PSAT scores, and an IQ test. The academy is a residential program held at the University of Missouri Columbia and funded by the state of Missouri. The academy features carefully selected faculty and staff, maybe not as selective when I did it a long time ago, a specially-designed curriculum that focuses on the liberal arts and a variety of stimulating extracurricular activities. Academy students are able to become part of a unique learning environment, so congratulations to the Missouri Scholars Academy attendees. And Vice President Foley?
All right, we'll start out with Elizabeth Siemens. Anastasia Kuzemka Randall. Sadine Alawni. Riley Vole. Sarah Sterling. Jayla Walker. Congratulations.
Our next agenda item is 3.05, and so the previous one, MSA, was formed in 1985. Not long afterwards, the state, led by a gentleman named Bob Roach, said, "Hey, we need to have something like this for Fine Arts Academy," so we now have that. Missouri Fine Arts Academy is a unique three-week residential summer program for exceptional Missouri artists who have completed their either the sophomore or junior year of high school. The program offers students the opportunity to enhance their skills in such fields as dance, visual arts, theater, and music while participating in a stimulating series of interdisciplinary and co-curricular activities. Students are nominated by their high schools to attend the academy. This year's Missouri Fine Arts Academy will be held this summer on the campus of Missouri State University in Springfield, Missouri. It is funded through a program, fees, grants, endowments, scholarships, and private donations. Congratulations to the following LSR 7 students attending this summer. Vice President Foley?
Audrey Chen from Lee Summit High School, Visual Arts. Laney Skaggs, Lee Summit High School, Visual Arts. Jake Johnson, Lee Summit North, Acting Theater. Kiana Williams, Lee Summit North, Vocal Music. Devon Mathis, Lee Summit North, Vocal Music. Rachel Thomasy, Lee Summit West, Creative Writing. Congratulations.
Our next recognition is 3.06, National Merit Scholars. Founded in 1955 to conduct the annual Merit Scholarship Competition. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation is a privately-financed, not-for-profit corporation. Scholarships awarded through this program are underwritten by nearly 500 independent sponsor organizations and institutions, as well as with the corporation's own funds. Nearly one and a half million students throughout the United States entered the merit program as juniors by taking the preliminary SAT slash National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which serves as an initial screen for program entrance. Of the one and a half million entrants, some 50,000 with the highest PSAT selection index score qualify for the recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Those students then go through two more rounds of consideration before scholarships are awarded. And I'll turn it over to Vice President Foley.
Lee Summit North students Alexander Greider and Thomas Burhe made it through and were selected for the first round of scholarships. Congratulations.
That's an amazing group of kids we got to recognize there. All right, next agenda item is 4.01, Finance Committee Report.
I don't have anything to specifically discuss from the Finance Committee unless any board members have any questions after viewing the Finance Committee meeting.
All right, is there any questions? All right, no questions. We have board reports and meetings attended for 4.02. Let's start with Board Member Eslic.
Mine's really short. I went to the Finance Committee meeting because we just had a board meeting two weeks ago, so that's all I've got.
All right, Board Member Miller?
Mine is short too. This week, I went to visit the PLMS sixth graders and viewed the eclipse with them, so that was quite an experience to view the eclipse in the eyes of sixth graders. I also was super excited. Jeff City that used to teach with me in Raytown from long, long ago, and so that was really, really cool, just a complete random, and she's retiring this year, and so that was kudos to her, and so that was really cool to see our students and then a mentor there. Thanks.
All right, Board Member Garrett?
Thank you. Okay, well, continued on with our school tours with Dr. Camille Johnson. We went to Pleasantly Middle School and Pleasantly Elementary, so that was nice. And then we went to the MSBA Advocacy Day last Tuesday. Gosh, this week is a blur, it seems like we've tackled so much. So we did that, and then the Bookshelf Buddy Ceremony, and yesterday I attended the Team Lee Summit meeting. That's it.
Okay, Dr. Johnson?
Hello, yeah, so I attended the annual Legislative Breakfast. Thank you to all of the legislators that came out to that and all of the community members. It was very informative. Also, like my board member mentioned, Regina Garrett, Pleasantly Elementary School and Pleasantly Middle School, and I just want everyone to know, when I go to your schools, I do ask you for your pie in the sky. I can't make any promises, but if you give me your list of things, I'll see what I can do. Also, I attended the Finance Committee meeting and then Team Lee Summit, once again, my favorite committee of all, a group of employees throughout the whole school district who come together for the greater good of everyone in the schools, so, thank you.
All right, Vice President Foley?
Thank you. I attended the LSR VII Legislative Breakfast and the Robotics Competition at Lee Summit North, and I just want to say good luck to Team Driven and Team Titanium as they head to the world championships. Then I went to the MSB Advocacy Day in Jefferson City and got to hear from the incoming DUC Commissioner, Charlotte Esslinger, and then I also attended the Bookshelf Buddies Ceremony.
All right, I attended the Legislative Breakfast with a couple of my colleagues, and that will conclude our report. Can I have an approval of transfer of funds, which is 5.01?
I move to approve the transfer of $5,396,180.46 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes. Can I have an approval of the Treasury's report and payment of all our bills?
I move to approve the Treasury's report and the payment of the bills.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. Second.
Oh, second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes. All right, we have our consent items, Items for Decision, 6.01, all the way down to 6.11, which is our personnel report. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes. Items for Decision, which is the certification of our Board of Election Director's Results, 7.01, do I have a motion?
I move that Stacy Myers and Bill Haley are duly elected members of the Board of Education.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion passes, raise your right hand.
Aye.
There we go, now the motion passes unanimously. All right, now we have our Items for Information, which is 9.01, 9.02, 9.03. Do we have any presentations, Dr. Buck? Okay, no presentations, are there any questions for any of the reports? Okay, and let's go to move on to 10.01, which is Public Comments.
Okay. We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that the board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board and administration, and if appropriate, we will discuss further action with the superintendent. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than seven people with a limit of three minutes each. You may not transfer any of your time to other speakers. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Your comments must align with the subject described in your written request to speak and must directly relate to the business or operations of the district. Your comments may not discuss individual employees or students in the district regardless of whether your comments speak of them in a positive or negative light. Any such comments should be directed to the superintendent, who will then determine if further action is needed. Because the board does not and cannot impose age-based restrictions on who attends or views board meetings, and because children of all ages frequently do attend board meetings, comments may not include obscenities or sexually explicit content. Furthermore, comments may not include threats of physical or emotional harm or threaten in any way the safety of others. We also remind all those in the audience that Board Policy BDDH prohibits the use of signs or audible responses. This includes applause, cheers, or jeers. If you're in the audience and wish to respond in some way to a public comment, you may contact the board or superintendent after the meeting. When your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any. Our first and only speaker is Sheri Ball.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Ball. I use she/her pronouns, and I have been a resident of Lee Summit for almost 21 years now. My two children attended LSR VII schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and they are proud, visible members of the LGBTQ+ community. Their experiences in school inspired me to pursue advocacy work, and I've had the privilege to co-facilitate several professional development trainings and Q&amp;A sessions with the secondary counselors of LSR VII. As the diversity of the LSR VII student population continues to grow, it is imperative for administrators, teachers, and staff to learn the skills to create safe and inclusive schools. Did you know research in our state shows physical harassment for LGBTQ+ students rose from 23% in 2019 to 70% in 2021? That the percentage of transgender and non-binary students physically assaulted in their schools rose from 7% to 10%? Did you know that while most LGBTQ+ students can identify at least one supportive school staff member, only 51% can identify six or more supportive staff? Research also shows that LGBTQ+ youth that have just one accepting adult in their lives are 40% less likely to attempt suicide. For LGBTQ+ youth in unaccepting homes, that one accepting adult may be a teacher, a recess age, or a school counselor. This is why it is so important for school districts to learn how to support all students through organizational and professional development, like dignity consulting and welcoming schools. If you would like to learn more about supporting LGBTQ+ students, I'd be happy to meet with you as a group or individually. I also have copies of the research studies that I have cited, if you're interested. Tomorrow is the National Day of Silence, which is a student-led demonstration where LGBTQ+ students and allies protest the discrimination and harassment of LGBTQ+ people in schools. In the past, students have taken a vow of silence to represent the silencing of LGBTQ+ students, but with more than 800 anti-LGBTQ+ bills introduced last year and thousands of book bans, the students have been encouraged to stand up and take action. Some of our LSR VII schools' students will be participating in the Day of Silence, and I truly hope that their silence and advocacy can change hearts and minds in their schools. Finally, I would like to thank board members Roderick Sparks and Ryan Murdock for their service to this district. Thanks to you, many families felt seen, heard, and protected, so you will be greatly missed. I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I would also like to congratulate new board members Stacy Myers and Bill Haley, and encourage you to remember all students and families in the future.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, if Board Member Murdock, if he would share any final remarks that he would have?
Well, first, let's start with, that's the quickest meeting we've ever been able to accomplish here, right? So, right? We just need to talk for a while here. Normally, I speak off the cuff, as many of my board members know, but I actually did write a couple of things down, so I hope you'll indulge me just a little bit here. First, Ms. Ball, thank you for your comments. So tonight is a little bit bittersweet, right? Six years on the board makes it difficult to leave. In 2016, I did make a commitment to come and try to serve the school district and ran in the April 2017 election amid what I can only describe as a very crowded field in a very unique time, for those of you who were around and know what was going on then. And while I would argue no one knew who I was at that particular time, I ran what I thought was a pretty spirited campaign, and I spent $464 on it. I didn't win a seat that year, but I had met with enough people, knocked enough doors, and served on enough committees to know that I wanted to try again in 2018. So I stayed engaged. I attended every board meeting between 2017 and the election of 2018. I continued to serve on committees, and then I did win a seat in the 2018 election. So fast-forwarding six years, I would say that there have been some ups and downs. Our board has worked through superintendent turnover, global pandemics, multiple boundary changes, and what I would argue is the most divisive political climate in my lifetime. That includes people who continue to advocate against public education, including many in Jefferson City, without realizing the consequences of their actions. That also includes a bill currently going regarding voucher expansion. Frequently, our most fervent critics during my six years on the board are ones who have never served on a committee within our district, have never volunteered within our schools, or who make wild accusations without ever coming and actually asking questions first. That is incredibly disheartening. But to my board members and to the community at large, I would argue our district is incredibly strong. We have dedicated, caring, compassionate, and highly experienced staff members who make a difference every single day. To my board members, to my fellow board members currently serving, and to those coming on the board, I certainly hope we don't take that for granted. The professionals, those professionals and this board are here to serve students first, end of story. And we trust and support the staff who do that work daily. Please don't buy into the rhetoric, go see it for yourself. Thank you to those board members who I have served with throughout the years, there's too many to name. Each of you brought talents and knowledge to your role, and I know that you care. We have too many people who try to tell us otherwise. Don't let that rattle you. Encourage those naysayers to step up, and if you want to be a little snarky, tell them see you at the next CAC meeting. Dr. Buck, thank you for coming to our district. I don't regret for one second being on the committee to hire you, and I'm very proud of our choice. Linda? That's it, I'm done. I promised Roderick I wouldn't do it, so there you go. That's, not even sure where to go with it, but putting me at a loss for words is probably the best compliment I can give you. The other things I need to give, and it's a little bit of a bummer tonight, is my family. I'm not sure that people understand the sacrifices that are made by our families with the amount of time that is given to this role. My wife, Kristy, who worked diligently to try to get here tonight but ended up on a flight that got delayed by nearly three hours in Atlanta and is unable to be here tonight, has stood by me through this, through it all. She's given up the time, the energy, sleepless nights when we get home after midnight meetings to talk things through. She knows the vitriol that has come our way. She's opened the hate mail to our home. To my boys, one who is here tonight, Isaac and Eli, Isaac who is here tonight, thank you for being here, buddy. Eli's at soccer practice, because that's what we do in our household, right? Is sports, sports, and a few more sports. They've also had to deal with me missing family dinners, sporting events, school activities, and the countless nights I got home after they were already in bed. So to all of them, especially those three, I say thank you. My extended family, friends, and colleagues, I do thank you also for your support over these two terms. So I'll try to keep it pretty simple in my conclusion here. Education has changed, just as the world has changed. We must adapt with the times and not be afraid to progress forward. When someone says that's not the way it was 20 years ago, they're absolutely right, but that doesn't mean that's the way it's supposed to be. Please work to hear from our marginalized populations throughout our district because we're not there yet. I'm immensely proud of our school district, of our staff, and our students, and don't let the naysayers tear us down. I've said it a million times, R7 proud. Thanks.
All right, come on, that's right. Great job, Board Member Murdock. I also normally go off the cuff, and I'm not going to do that, and so I'm going to read my comments. First, I would like to publicly recognize and honor my beautiful wife, Lauren, who is at home, and also our children, Frank and Riley, who I must say, my son is number one in the state for the long jump. We don't get to brag on our kids much, and so I'm going to take this time and brag on my children. And so not only is he number one in the state, but he got a full ride at Northwest University, and so I am proud of that. He also was offered actually a total of three full rides, and so I'm just thankful and I'm proud of my kids and what LSR VII has contributed to that. And then also my daughter Riley, who is a phenomenal setter on her volleyball team, and I am also proud of her and what she has done. I'm also appreciative of their support, their encouragement along this journey, and provided me the grace for not always being able to attend their games, their events, programs, and having to leave that all to my wife, and then also allowing me to be able to show up after midnight and then still want to say, Dad, I love you. To this board, as a new chapter begins, I am filled with gratitude for the experiences shared, the pride in our accomplishments, and a touch of sadness. Sadness that I will no longer be the best-dressed man to have ever served on this board. First and foremost, I want to express my deepest appreciation to each and every one of you. Together, we have navigated challenges, celebrated success, and worked tirelessly to ensure the best possible outcomes for every student in our district. Your dedication, your passion, your unwavering commitment to education have been truly inspiring. As we move forward, I urge you to silence the noise that's in your minds and open your eyes to see the needs that every single one of our students need. In the hustle and the bustle of our daily responsibilities, it is easy to lose sight of the individual needs that each child deserves, but it's imperative that we remain vigilant, compassionate, proactive in addressing those very needs. It has been my deepest desire to see that every barrier is removed, so that we truly meet the needs of every single one of our children, that they can reach their maximum potential in life. Together, we have strived to do this endeavor, but there is still much work to be done. Let us continue to advocate tirelessly for equity, inclusion, and opportunities for all. Actions always speak louder than words. I'm going to repeat that. Actions will always speak louder than words. My commitment to students, families, educators, and staff of Lee Summit School District remains unwavering. First and foremost, I want to express my deepest appreciation to each and every one of you. Together, we have navigated challenges, celebrated success, and worked tirelessly to ensure the best possible outcomes for every student in our district. Your dedication, your passion, your unwavering commitment to education have been truly inspiring. As we move forward, I urge you to silence the noise that's in your minds and open your eyes to see the needs that every single one of our students need. In the hustle and the bustle of our daily responsibilities, it is easy to lose sight of the individual needs that each child deserves. But it's imperative that we remain vigilant, compassionate, proactive in addressing those very needs. It has been my deepest desire to see that every barrier is removed, so that we truly meet the needs of every single one of our children, that they can reach their maximum potential in life. Together, we have strived to do this endeavor, but there is still much work to be done. Let us continue to advocate tirelessly for equity, inclusion, and opportunities for all. Actions always speak louder than words. I'm going to repeat that. Actions will always speak louder than words. My commitment to students, families, educators, and staff of Lee Summit School District remains unwavering. I have full confidence in the incredible team assembled here in R7, and I know that under your leadership, the future is bright. Serving alongside you have been an honor and privilege. As my public service continues beyond LSR7, please know that I carry with me the invaluable lessons learned and the cherished memories during my time here. The story may never be told, but history has been written, and that, that will never change. Thank you. Thank you, thank you to this community, and thank you for everyone that's present. At this time... At this time, if our new, newly-elected candidates will come forth, we will turn it over to Dr.
Before you do that, we have a parting gift for you. We'd like to give to you two, and Linda, I might have you come up and help me with this. I didn't tell Linda this ahead of time. You give, as you both eloquently said, a ton of time, and the pay is $0, and the sacrifices are huge, and we cannot thank you enough for that. So Linda and I will both give you a little bit of a timekeeper as you get your time back. So this is Ryan Murdock's plaque, and we have President Sparks' plaque here. Both these gentlemen served as Presidents of the Board of Education at some point. Mr. Murdock also served as Vice President for one year before, two years of service as a Board President. So thank you for everything you both have done. Thank you for your interest in service. We need more human beings to want, want to serve, so thank you both. Give him a round of applause.
So now at this time, if the newly-elected board members will come forth, and me and Mr. Murdock will sit down in the audience, and we will allow them to continue the rest of this meeting.
So 11.01, retiring board adjourns and signee dies. So thank you again, both of you. Don't be strangers. And so we have two people coming up, and Ms. Ismer's got a microphone you get to speak into and give your oath.
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support...
That I will support...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri...
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of school director...
Discharge the duties of school director...
In and for...
In and for...
The reorganized school district number seven...
The reorganized school district number seven...
Of Jackson County...
Of Jackson County...
State of Missouri...
State of Missouri...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
According to law...
According to law.
Thank you. Take your seat.
We're going to have another meeting here in about five minutes. Give us a chance to reorganize a little bit, but obviously, if our new board members, if you want to have photos of family up here before we start, that's more welcome to do so before we reorganize the Board of Education. So if you want to come up with your family, get photo ops, we could have somebody to hold the phone for you, or not. It doesn't matter if you, if you don't want to, but I want to get offered that, and we'll start this up in about five minutes.
So I have some students in the crowd, and they could please come up? Once a teacher, always a teacher. And then I've got some coworkers. And then I've got some coworkers.
We're going to have another meeting here in about five minutes. Give us a chance to reorganize a little bit. But obviously, if our new board members, if you want to have photos of family up here before we start, that's more welcome to do so before we reorganize the Board of Education. So if you want to come up with your family, get photo ops, we can have somebody to hold the phone for you or not. It doesn't matter if you don't want to. But I want to offer that. And we'll start this up in about five minutes.
So I have some students in the crowd. If they could please come up. Once a teacher, always a teacher. And then I've got some coworkers.
All right, good evening. We're going to start the second part, or the reorganization part of the meeting. So I'd like to call it order and adopt, adoption of the agenda. So can I get a motion? Hoping for more than one.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. So here's how this works. So this is always an odd thing. We do it once a year. So I, and what's odd about this is that there's nothing in board policy or Robert's Rules of Order really tells you how to do it. So first off, congratulations to new board members Miller and Myers. Sorry, Haley and Myers. I appreciate you guys both willing to serve. And I appreciate the four people also ran against you, willing to serve. Like I said earlier, it's very, very important. So congratulations. Look forward to working with you in the near future here. Board policy BCA requires that I act as temporary chairperson for about five minutes hopefully, to conduct the election of board president and vice president. But the policy does not spell out precisely how that is to be done. And Robert's Rules of Order, as I said earlier, does not provide much guidance either. So with that in mind, our board attorney, he wrote board attorney and I, but it was really board attorney, has developed these procedures. The same procedures will be used for both electing a board president and vice president, except that, of course, the person elected for board president cannot also serve as the vice president. We'll go through the process, electing board president, then repeat for vice president. Then we have other officers that are going to be elected. And I'll turn it over for the presidents to run that per board policy. So here's how it works. One, nominations. I'll ask for nominations. Any board member can be nominated by another board member or a board member can nominate himself or herself. Nominations do not require a second. Once a board member is nominated, he or she is eligible for the office unless they decline it. So if somebody says, you know, I nominate X person, I'll say, X person, do you accept? If they say accept, then they're qualified. Once it appears that there will be no more nominations, I'll ask you if there are any other nominations. If there are none, I will declare nominations to be closed. Remarks. Once nominations are closed, and if there are more than one nominee, each nominee may speak for no more than two minutes in support of his or her candidacy. And I do believe that Kevin Whaley, Dr. Whaley is going to set up a two-minute timer for us. The order of which the nominee speaks will be determined by a blind draw out of a bowl. After each nominee has spoken, or waived the right to do so, the board members who have not been nominated may ask questions of any of the nominees. I will do my best to recognize board members in the order they ask, using the buttons in the microphones. And please know that board member Haley and board member Myers, your names are not on this board. So when you hit, I've got to figure out who you are because these are the old names, okay? I'll do my best. My captain coder, the coder ring here. Captain Crunch the coder ring here. Then we go to step three after questions are done, and that's the voting. All voting will be by show of hands. Determining the winning candidate is the last part of this. The winning candidate must ultimately be elected by the majority of the board, i.e. four or more board members. So if we had three nominees and the vote was 3-3-1, we do not have a winner. We, if it's 3-2-2, we don't have, we have to have at least four vote yes votes. So we may have more than one vote if that happened, okay? So with that, I will now open nominations for the office of board president. Yes, board member Miller.
I nominate Dr. Camille Johnson for president.
Do you accept?
Yes.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Vice President Jennifer Foley for president.
Board member Foley, do you accept?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'm closing nominations. So now I have to find your two names and put it in a bowl. Then we'll randomly select who's going to talk first. And you have two minutes. You can't decline to talk if you do not wish to do so. So here's Foley. Here's Johnson. Turn them upside down. Spin them around. Linda, you want to come pull a name out? No pressure, Linda. She would love to, she said. The bowls, yep, there you go. You're being honest. I like that. So going first will be Jennifer Foley, followed by Dr. Johnson. So two minutes and, there you go. Thank you, Dr. Whaley. Two minutes to speak if you wish or decline.
Okay, thank you. I have served in the role as vice president. And as of today, I have received the master board member certification. I am dedicated to working with everyone on the board to continue to just find ways to continuously improve and to grow in our relationships within the board, within the community, within the staff. I have dedicated the time and I can make time to meet the presidential obligations. And I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Let's give, you're fast, Dr. Whaley. Dr. Johnson, two minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate the nomination for president. I have been a devoted member to this school board and to the teachers and the students of Lee Summit LSR 7. I am committed to continuing to support this district with my time. I'm committed to bringing the community together. As many of you know, I speak to anyone who is interested in speaking to me. And I like to reach across all aisles to talk to people. If you know me, you know I'm going to be straightforward with you. And you know I'm going to give you the facts. And I'm going to vote my conscience. That is something that I can promise that I will continue to do in this role. I have served on committees that are very near and dear to me. Number one being Team Lee Summit. And again, that's me looking at the boots on the ground, who are taking care of our children every single day and thinking about the best ways to support them. So with that said, I accept this nomination for presidency and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. So now this is the next stage is the other five of you. You can ask questions of either board member at this time. If you push your button, I'll try to do my best to call on you. Hearing none? Oh, we do have one. Board member Miller?
All right, guys. What is your vice president, this is for Vice President Foley. What is your vision to bring the community together?
I think it is important to look at the accomplishments that we have made over this past year, looking at the Dinner with the Board, community conversations, and how successful that was. And continue to think about how we can grow opportunities like that within our community to get board members and community members together to talk about all the different things that are going well and not going so well in our district.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll move to vote. So, you know, he didn't write this part down. Well, Stephanie gave Joe a hard time. I know he's not here today. So I do, do you remember? Is it, do we vote on first one, Stephanie? All right. So we have two nominees. A motion to who we were going to vote on first. Does anybody want to make said motion?
I make a motion to vote.
On?
On.
It's got to be on which person? I think there's a motion.
On me? Oh, okay, on me.
I know it's very awkward. This is the most awkward meeting of the year. So we have a motion to vote on Dr. Johnson for president. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, now I'm going to say aye. Do we need a roll call for this one? Do roll call. Ms. Ismer, roll call. And so folks, when you vote for the new ones, when she says your name, you push the button and say aye or nay or abstain.
Board member Miller?
Aye.
Board member Haley?
I'm not sure exactly what I'm voting for here. Am I voting just for Dr. Miller? I mean, I'm sorry, for Dr. Johnson?
Dr. Johnson for president.
Nay.
Vice President Foley?
No.
Board member Myers?
Yea.
Board member Garrett?
No.
Board member Johnson?
Yes.
Board member Eslic?
No.
Motion fails. Do I have another motion? There's kind of one more choice.
I move to vote for Jennifer Foley for president.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Roll call, Ms. Ismer?
Board member Haley?
Yes.
Board member Foley?
Aye.
Board member Myers?
No.
Board member Garrett?
Yes.
Board member Johnson?
No.
Board member Eslic?
Aye.
Board member Miller?
No.
Motion carries. Congratulations to President Foley. Board policy has. Board policy still has me doing vice president. It seems awkward to me. But then you will do secretary, treasurer, assistant secretary, and assistant treasurer. So prepare yourself for that. And I'll give you this little script if you need it, if you need to look at it. So I'll open up nominations for vice president.
I nominate board member Heather Eslic for vice president.
Do you accept, Heather?
I accept.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate board member Miller for vice president.
Do you accept?
I do.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. All right, we have to put your two names in to see who gets to speak first for two minutes. So give me a second. Sorry, Stacy, I put you in there. You didn't know for that, did you? Ms. Eslic, your paper has disappeared on me. There it is, okay. All right. So I'm going to have Ms. Ismer come up and select who will talk first. And it will be Ms. Eslic.
Can I start now? Sure, okay. Well, I didn't know that speaking for two minutes was even an option for this. So I definitely didn't prepare any comments. But I've been on the board for two years. I spend a tremendous amount of time that may not be necessarily in the buildings and forward-facing, but working for the district. I am very diligent in the work that I do to make sure that I am prepared for all board meetings and building relationships with fellow board members and our staff. This is a position that I think I'm very qualified for and that I will do the work to support this district, build collaboration amongst fellow board members, continue to work with our staff, and continue to support the strategic objectives that our board has set forth. And I hope that we continue on that same trajectory for this next year. And I would appreciate your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Board member Eslic? Board member Miller?
All right. Well, first and foremost, I just, I've been, I've been so grateful to have this opportunity to serve on the board. I've thoroughly enjoyed, as you all probably, as you listen to my board reports and see the joy on my face and hear the joy in my voice, it's because I love the work that I've been chosen to do. And I love being involved. And I love being able to just be in the know about what's really going on in the classrooms and in the buildings and talk to the teachers and talk to the administrators and be with the students and just learn more about how amazing our district is. And also hear from our students and our staff about what changes that they'd like to see. I'm committed to the work. I love the work that I, that I get to do. And I also believe that it's important to have bipartisan leadership on our board just so that there's representation in board leadership that represents our district, that represents our community. And so that's why I think it's important to. I would, I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
At this time, the other five board members, if you have a question for either candidate, please push your red button. Board member Johnson?
Sorry. Yes, my question is for Heather. So Heather, just curious and moving forward with the equity and dignity work that we have started here at LSR 7, what do your plans look like?
Well, I think we continue to talk through those programs as a board. We already have approved as a board the current vendors that we have moving forward. So that's continuing on the work that we are already moving forward with. I work for the board. I work with the board. So when the board makes a move, once that decision is made, there's, that's what we do. We move forward together. So that's exactly what I would do as vice president, is continue to move forward with the will of the board. I don't think it's any secret from multiple meetings and multiple conversations that I would prefer we explore other vendors. But that doesn't mean that I don't support the program. I think there's a distinction between vendors and services that those vendors provide and the manner that they do that and the overall goal of having a program that achieves the end that we're looking for. So I would just like to see us have dialogue about different approaches to achieving the end. But I don't have a problem with having an approach at all. So that's kind of the long answer to we continue as we are until we have an opportunity to have more dialogue about it in the future. So, thanks.
Thank you, board member Eslic. Other questions from the other five board members? Hearing done. I'll take a motion on who to vote for for vice president.
I'd like to make a motion to vote for Erica Miller for vice president.
Do I have a second?
I'll second if I can get this to work.
All right. So we'll do a roll call from Ms. Ismer. Again, we're voting on vice president for board member Miller.
Board member Foley?
No.
Board member Myers?
Yes.
Board member Garrett?
No.
Board member Johnson?
Yes.
Board member Eslic?
No.
Board member Miller?
Yes.
Board member Haley?
No.
Motion fails. Do I have another motion?
I make a motion that we vote on Heather Eslic for vice president.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ismer, roll call.
Board member Myers?
No.
Board member Garrett?
Yes.
Board member Johnson?
No.
Board member Eslic?
Yes.
Board member Miller?
No.
Board member Haley?
Yes.
Board member Foley?
Aye.
And that moves us on to item 1.04. So I'll turn it over to President Foley and let her do the next four offices. Ms. Foley, President Foley, do you want to be here to push the buttons? Or do you just want to just go by the cuff? It is kind of weird to switch in the middle of a meeting. I don't know.
We can, we can say like, yeah, this is fine.
All right.
All right. At this time, can I get a nomination for the secretary for the Board of Education? Do I just? I move that the board reappoint Linda Ismer as secretary of the Board of Education. Reappoint, wait, do I have to, can I read them all together? Am I supposed to read them all together?
You can do them all together because it is 1.04 all in one thing, yes.
Gotcha, okay. I move that the board reappoint Linda Ismer as secretary of the Board of Education. Reappoint Nathan Holder as treasurer of the Board of Education. Reappoint Hannah Pruitt as assistant secretary. And reappoint Sharon Garcia as assistant treasurer.
Second.
All right. Can I get a roll call though?
Board member Garrett?
Aye.
Board member Johnson?
Aye.
Board member Eslic?
Aye.
Board member Miller?
Aye.
Board member Haley?
Aye.
President Foley?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.